Back to item 13. This is to consider approving a development proposal to demolish a 71,250 square foot retail center, The Oaks. Remove and replace 74 protected trees and construct a mixed-use development consisting of 267 housing units, 88 row houses/townhouses, 179 senior apartments, of which 131 are senior licensed assisted living units, and 48 are affordable or below market rate senior independent living units, 27 memory care licensed assisted living residences, memory care residences, and 20,000 square feet of commercial space. The applicant is requesting a heart of the city exception for retail frontage along Stevens Creek Boulevard. The applicant is also requesting a density bonus, including associated density bonus parking reduction and density bonus waivers for height, slope, line setback, and dispersion of BMR housing units, as well as an incentive/concession for the consolidation of BMR housing units in a single senior building. City approvals would be certificates of the final environmental impact report, development permit, including findings regarding density bonus, parking reduction, concession, and waivers, architectural and site approval permit, tree removal permit, use permit, heart of the city exception, and vesting tentative map application numbers, DP 201805, ASA 201805, TM 201803, TM 201822, U 2019-03, EXE 2019-03, EA 2018-04. The applicants are KT Urban, Mark Trusini, location 21267 Stevens Creek Boulevard, assessor parcel number 32627042 and 043. Okay, that's it. Let's have a staff report then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bennett Fu, Director of Community Development. We have John Matier here with us today, the project manager. He'll be presenting with you a presentation. It will be as brief as possible, but understanding the complexity of the project, we want to make sure we hit all the points. With us, we also have Winter King, a partner from Shumhali as well, here to present and also answer questions. So with that, I will hand it off to John for the presentation. Thank you. John?
Yes, Ben. Thank you, John Matier, Senior Planner, Community Development Department. And as Ben said, I am the, I've been the project planner on this proposal for the last, gosh, probably about two years now. And again, as Bennett said, that we'll try to make this as brief as possible, although as he also said, this is a complex project, so we won't try to skip over anything too quickly. First off, can everyone see my presentation okay? Clear? Is my voice clear?
Yep.
Right, thank you. All right, so again, I'm not going to repeat all of what the mayor had said, repeating the subject and whatnot. I thought it was pretty clear, and also in terms of what the applications are. We will go, I will go through more in depth what these applications are, and as consistent as we have been in the staff report. So we're already in the process. Here is a timeline that follows the EIR process, as you might be aware, that this project heard the request of the applicant, went through the environmental impact report process. And so we're essentially at the very end, and you can see where the star is, we're in the current phase, and this is where the city council has the opportunity to certify the file EIR and approves the project. So again, the EIR process was probably about little over a year long, where we had the notice of preparation all the way in July 11th of 2019, all the way through here. Project location, it's in an area with mix of uses. You can see north of the other Glanville Apartments, a number of civic uses to the east, including Memorial Park and Senior Center, educational uses to the south, the ends of college specifically, Highway 85 to the west, which we have Modern Vista on the other side of that, and we also have the sites bordered on Stevens Creek Boulevard in the south with Mayor Avenue meandering from around the north and eastern edges. This project site is within the Heart of the City's specific plan, special area, and is governed by the Heart of the City's specific plan specifically, and is part of The Oaks Gateway, which is envisioned to be kind of a mix of uses and a gateway project area. So in the housing element, this site is considered a priority housing site within the general plan in the housing element. The housing element allocates 200 units based on a realistic capacity, which is essentially 85% of the maximum capacity, which for the size of 30 dwelling units an acre. The proposed base density is 237 units, which is consistent with what is allowed in the general plan. A few more things with the project data, there is one level of below ground garage with 187 parking spaces, residential common open space, which is basically based upon the unit count of 44,945 square feet. There's also 2,900 square feet of commercial common open space, based upon the size of the retail space, 386 onsite/offsite tree replacements, 473 protected development trees proposed, that are proposing to be relocated, and the tentative map, which would divide the property into two separate parcels. So this is essentially a site plan with the teal, I guess, or turquoise colors being the mixed-use buildings, and the orange colors being the townhouses or row houses. You don't hear terms like Building 1, Building 2, townhouse, rowhouses. So this is good, so this illustration will kind of help guide you in terms of where those buildings are on the site. What we hear over here is Building 1, which is the 131-unit senior mixed-use building that also has 27 memory care rooms and slightly over 17,000 square feet of retail. Then you have the Building 2, which is the 48-unit BMR mixed-use building. And then you have the 70 townhome condominiums, as well as the 18 rowhouse condominiums, right Project data, so there's two residential commercial buildings, or essentially two mixed-use buildings. So Building 1, which is what you saw before on the prior slide, as well as Building 2. Both buildings are six stories. Building 1 has 160, I do apologize, it should be 131 senior residential units with 27 memory care licensed assisted living residences and 17,600 square feet of ground for retail. Building 2 has 48 below-market rate senior residential units and 2,400 square feet of ground for retail. And then you have the 70 townhomes, the 18 rowhouses condominiums. So density bonus or waiver requests, consistent with 1956 our density bonus ordinance. So what we have is essentially 20% of the 237 base units as being considered below-market rate. Of those, 12.2% is considered very low income, and 8% or 19 units are considered low income, which is consistent with our BMR manual. The density bonus for very low-income units was selected in terms of how we determine the amount of concessions, and also the amount of density bonus units that are allowed. The density bonus ordinance only allows you to pick from one of those income categories. The applicant is entitled to maximum density bonus of 35% allowed by state law, in other words, 83 units, in addition to their base density units of 237 units. However, they've requested a 24% bonus or 30 units above the base density of 237, or 267 units, for a total of 267 units on site. Density bonus waiver requests. The applicant may request waivers or reduction development standards that will have the effect of physically precluding the construction of a density bonus development. They have chosen to do three waivers. There is the, an applicant may request as many waivers as they'd like, unlike incentives or concessions where you're based upon certain affordability, and that's capped at three. So the first waivers are for height, and that's for Building 1 to be 70 feet at the eve line, or 79 and a half feet to the roof ridge.
Could I just interrupt for one second here? Because I think this is kind of not quite, could you back up one slide?
Sure.
I hate to interrupt you there, but you know, 267 units, what we've been hearing is it's a senior enhanced project with 294. Is this reverting back to the pre-senior enhanced project?
As explained in the staff report, the 27 memory care units, or actually, the 27 memory care rooms do not count as units. So the 294 minus 27 gets you to 267.
Okay, well, thank you.
No problem. That's a good, that's a great question and clarification. So again, the maximum height in the general plan for this area is 45 feet. The applicant is asking for a waiver to increase the height to 79, slightly over 79 feet for Building 1, and almost 75 feet for Building 2. The slope back, I'm sorry, the slope setback for this area in the general plan off of Stevens Creek Boulevard is 1 to 1 from the curb line. They're asking for a waiver for the slope setback to be 1 to 1.7 for Building 1, and 1 to 1.4A for Building 2. Further, the third and final waiver is waiver of the requirement for section 19.56.050.G1 that affordable units be dispersed throughout the project.
Oh, can I interrupt you as well?
Sure.
So why would Building 1 qualify for waivers for height and setback? Because I didn't think those density bonus units were there, or the, yeah, maybe I'm confused here, why both buildings qualify for the waivers?
Well, the waivers, and again, I'll ask Winter to jump in if I'm saying the wrong thing, or to add on to what I'm saying, you know, per the density bonus law, waivers can be applied to any portion of the project if it's proven that that waiver will take away any physical preclusion from developing of the senior units. And so at this point, the applicant has asked for the, has requested these waivers because allowing the density bonus units to be built, or and/or the affordable units to be built, or any of the units at the density that are requesting to be built, they would need the height of the buildings, or they're requesting, they're explaining that they would need the height, the buildings to be this high to have that density built out.
And good evening, council members and Mayor Scharf. This is Winter King. Just to piggyback on what John said, yes, waivers, a project that qualifies for a density bonus is entitled to waivers, and the waivers would waive development standards that would physically preclude the project. That's the way the statute is written. So that's why they are requesting waivers for both Building 1 and Building 2. And I would also note that they have submitted plans indicating that the units that they are referring to as their density bonus units are on the upper floors of Building 1.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure. And thank you, Winter, for that clarification. So the, on July 31st, the, in response to the planning commission's denial of the project, and we'll go into that a little bit more detail later on, the applicant had submitted for a concession for the consolidation of the BMR units into Building 2. And the concession is basically to allow them not to have to disperse the units between the two senior buildings, essentially Building 1 and Building 2 into, all into one. Because they have a 12% of their housing proposed onsite is very low income, they are allowed to have two concessions or incentives, but they are choosing to request only one. So as you might or might know, or at least you read in the staff report, this project had gone to planning commission twice. The first time was on May 12th of this year. The planning commission recommended FIBO vote to certify the final environmental impact report and adopt the resolutions approving the project. And I'll explain to you why, how to go back a second time. So on June 4th, the applicant had submitted a revised plan in which, a couple things. First, they relocated the nine, nine proposed BMR units that were in Building 1, and consolidated them into Building 2. Essentially, the units, the 49 units, excuse me, the 48 units that they were proposing, BMR units on the project site, 38 were in Building 1, I'm sorry, 39 were in Building 1, 39 were in Building 2, and nine were, when it went to the planning commission on May 12th. However, after that meeting, for various reasons, which we'll go into a little bit, the applicant had decided that they needed to consolidate those units all into one building and not have any BMR units in Building 1. Further, they added to, as part of that consolidation, they felt the necessary to add a floor to Building 2, which increased the base height of the building, even though they had, at the recommendation of the planning commission, had removed the tower elements from both Building 1 and Building 2, which actually lowered the overall height of Building 1, but didn't, but also slightly increased the height of Building 2, as Building 2 had actually added that floor. Further, some smaller revisions were, the alteration of unit mixes, where Building 2 was adjusted to have two-bedroom units, addition to the studios and one-bedroom units as well. So at the planning commission here on July 14th, 2020, the planning commission took a different take on the application. They recommended denial of the project, 32, with Feng and Takahashi voting no. What they found was that the, that the application was inconsistent with the BMR Housing Mitigation Program procedural manual, specifically section 2.3.4D. The request to have those BMR units consolidated in one senior building rather than two, at least for the reasons that the applicant had given at the time, was not physically precluded. They had only requested a waiver for that, and the, and the planning commission cannot find any findings to make that physical preclusion for that consolidation of BMR units. But as evident in that hearing, there was discussion that evidence of a financial impact may support a request for a concession under the state density bonus law. And so as we discussed, so subsequently, prior to, a few weeks ago, the applicant had submitted for that on July 31st, that incentive concession for the dispersion, oh, for the consolidation of those units within Building 2. And we'll get to that more in depth. So an illustration submitted by the applicant about the density bonus and waiver request. So on the left, what you see is Building 1, and on the right, what you see is Building 2. Both buildings are six stories. The only difference, the reason why Building 1 might be five feet higher than Building 2, is because of retail, the ground floor of the retail, the ceiling heights are slightly larger on Building 1, at 20 feet, where the retail height is 15 feet. As you can see, the red line illustrate on these elevations are there to show the 1 to 1 slope, and how it would relate to the buildings. The blue lines are essentially what the requested waivers for the slope line setback would be in relation to the required slope. The height is also illustrated over here as well, with 45 feet on this, on Building 1 being somewhere in the middle of the fourth floor, where 45 feet in Building 2 would be somewhere just nicking the fourth floor right here. One other thing this does show that the actual setback per the Heart of the City's specific plan, 35 feet from the face of curb, is actually being met and exceeded by both of these buildings. So as part of the request for the waivers, the applicant needs to submit a justification statement. And so as attached to this staff report, there were many letters from the applicant's attorney, as well as the architect, as to reason why they can justify the waiver request. I'll go through very quickly these bulleted items. Again, these are the words of the applicant, not of staff. At the tolerance structures with a higher density housing, retail concentrated eastern end of the site line for greater product mix of housing, better transition to a single family, lower elevated apartments along Mayor Avenue. And I believe the applicant, when they get their opportunity to speak, do have some illustrations that will point these out. And according to them, strict enforcement that stands will require units to be further relocated parts around the site, potentially lose required open space, limiting the height of Building 1 to 45 feet would directly eliminate 102 senior units, plus limit another 15 units in order to relocate many space to a lower floor. Limiting height to Building 2 to 45 would directly eliminate 18 BMR units, senior BMR units from the project. Further, for the consolid, for the waiver for the dispersal requirement, consolidation of senior housing components adheres to certain design requirements and code regulations to our particular senior population. Dispersal of senior housing within a mixed housing development is precluded by state, not only state, but also federal laws. So to verify the waiver requests by the applicant, the city had hired a third-party architectural firm that found that applying the highest slope line requirements would do the following. It would decrease the amount of open space in landscape areas, reduce the average size of senior units, reduce the retail support space included areas identified for trash loading and lava space, reduce commercial ceiling heights, and decrease above parking and increase underground parking. And this, this third-party review is actually attached to your staff report. Density bonus and concession requests. So again, these are the, this is the concession for the consolidation of BMR units in Building 2, and why it cannot be dispersed between the two senior buildings, Building 1 and Building 2. Again, these are the words of the applicant. So what they found, they use, again, a concession is, some of that's financial, that would show some type of cost prohibition if these standards are, are applied strictly to a project. And so what they found is that if they, if the BMR units were not consolidated in Building 2, and were required to be dispersed between the two senior buildings, that the Building 1, since Building 1 requires a type 1 construction, whereas Building 2 can be built as a type 3, they could save as much as $215,000 a unit.
Can you tell us what type 1 is versus type 3? Is it, you know, wood versus steel and concrete, or what is it?
Sure. So type 1 is considered, yes, exactly what you said, steel and concrete construction. And this has to do with the assisted living, the assisted living programming of the building, and its requirement for the state and federal laws. Type 3 is more of a hybrid, where you can have some wood construction as well, as long as it is sprinkled throughout the story, throughout the mid-rise section of the development. And again, you know, why can't it be type 5, which is 100%, 100% wood? You know, it's very difficult for anything above two stories, at least that's my understanding of the building code as well. But the portion of, I will say though, the portion of Building 2 that is, that's connected to the underground parking will have to be type 1. The second reason is that the regulated senior assisted living facility, the service of the offered operating costs, logistics, additional facility requirements, and financing aspects create physical and financial obstacles. And when you have to add those, again, in this case, nine BMR units, the cost recovery would not be, would be much, very much so a burden to the developer. Further, to subsidize the affordable housing with BMR units, applying for low income housing tax credit program can be used to subsidize the affordable units. However, if it's not consolidated, it'd be very difficult, if not impossible, to get that low income tax credit, or at least being able to apply for that low income tax credit. So like the waiver requests, the city hired a third-party reviewer to review the concession requests, and to see, you know, is there any validity to the, to the claims that the dispersion of, dispersion of the BMR units between the two senior buildings would be financially, a financial burden to the project, and could be a hindrance to development of those BMR units. What our third, what the city's third-party reviewer found was, three things, that the hard construction costs for Building 1 would be at least 20% greater per square foot basis than the, for Building 2, and that's because of the types of construction. If the BMR units were included in Building 1, ongoing operating costs would exceed the BMR housing allowance for rent utilities and add to subsidy of units, pretty much consistent with what the applicant had alluded to. And three, the developer cannot apply for tax credits if BMR units located in Building 1, at least for those units that would be located in Building 1. So findings required for the denial of a waiver or incentive concession. So if the city finds that, that there are waivers or concessions applicable to the site, there's only three ways that the, that the city could deny this project. And the first is that the waiver incentive concession would have an adverse impact on real property, listed on California Register of Historic Resources, which this property is not. The waiver is, or incentive or concession would have a specific adverse impact upon public health or safety, or the physical environment, and there's no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid a specific adverse impacts. Again, this, this project went through the, went through an environmental impact report where no significant impacts were found that could not have been mitigated. And that the third and final one is that the waiver incentive concessions contrary to state or federal law, and what staff could not find was how this way, neither of these waivers or incentives or concessions are contrary to the state or federal law. Unit comparability, this is one, one section of the project the staff does not have a recommendation for, and we will rely, we will let council make that determination whether they feel, whether you feel, excuse me, that the units are comparable. So one of the things that the BMR manual and, as well as the density bonus ordinance requires, that the BMR units are comparable to the market rate units on site. So we did an analysis between the units of Building 1 and Building 2, and we found that the, that the mix percentage is pretty much accurate between the two buildings in terms of what percentage of the units are studios, or one bedrooms, or two bedrooms, or two units. And we found that there are, there are differences though, in the average size of the studios in one bedrooms, two bedrooms, between the two buildings. So you see the studios are quite close, however, the one bedroom, the more bedrooms you add to the, to the units, the further away the square footage or the consistency is between the two. In terms of, if you want to look at the townhouses, rowhouses, unit comparability between these, these structures on site, or these units, the average size of, you know, all townhomes, all the townhomes and rowhouses are all three bedrooms, none are two bedrooms, and the average units sizes are about around 2,600 for the townhomes, and around 2,400 for the rowhouses. So another approval for the site is the use permit. So the use, a use permit is required for two different reasons on this, for this project. The first is that it's required for residential units on a mixed-use housing element site, which is this one, that propose the units above the realistic capacity of the housing element. If you remember from, early on in the presentation, we talked about the realistic capacity on the site, or the allocation from the housing element, it's being 200 units. Although that the maximum, although this is 85% of the maximum capacity, to get to that 30 dwelling units an acre, the, not only does the Heart of the City's specific plan, the zoning ordinance, as well as the general plan, require that the, that someone going above the realistic capacity or the allocation to the, even the base dwelling units per acre has to get a use for it for that, or at least apply for it. Again, the, the project is, is applying for the max density of 30 units per acre, or 237 units. I do want to note that the applicant has submitted this application to protest because maximum density for the site, as shown in general plan, is 30 units per acre, and is is their understanding and feeling that requiring a use permit for the site is in violation of, of multiple state and federal housing laws. The second half of the use permit is the allowing a residential care facility with seven or greater residents in a residential zone. What we have is a 27-room memory care facility in Building One, which would provide residents with 24 hours of supervised or supervision, although they will live independent within their one-bedroom units. What makes these rooms not units is that they don't have a kitchen inside. They would have, there is a communal dining room and kitchen area where meals will be provided. Pursuant to CMC Section 1920-20, you can't have a similar facility within 500 feet of property boundary of another residential facility. We can, and staff was not able to identify one within 500 feet. This thing is, this, this facility is required to obtain a license issued by the appropriate state or county agencies and/or departments. Hard to see the exception. So they did apply, again, by protest for a hard to see exception for the retail component of the project. The hardest city specific plan states that the frontage, the frontage of any parcel that abuts Stevens Creek Boulevard has to be at least 75% dedicated to the direct retailing of goods. And the rear of that building has to be at least 50% programmed to be direct retailing of goods. What we find is that it's substantially lower than the 75%. The project provides approximately 40% of the frontage of Stevens Creek Boulevard to that, as well as only 25% to the rear. So the applicant was required to apply for the hardest city exception. The applicant had provided a couple, couple pieces of material to justify the hardest exception. One was alternate layout showing, demonstrating what the, if they had adhered strictly to the hardest city standard for retail frontage on Stevens Creek Boulevard, what the retail frontage would look like compared to what's being proposed right here. What they're able to show is that the retail would have to go all the way almost onto the, the corner of where the 85 on-ramp is with Stevens Creek Boulevard. And, you know, and staff agree with them that, that, you know, the ability to rent and the visibility of those retail spots by the, by pedestrians or by through traffic along Stevens Creek Boulevard, particularly those going eastbound, would be very difficult along that corner. It will also be difficult or very inhibiting for pedestrian traffic to walk all the way over here near the, near the on-ramp. And so to concentrate the retail as they do over here is probably more conducive and in placing the same amount of retail that will be required over here and just relocate along Mary Avenue where, actually, it's not required, you're not really losing as much retail square footage with this development. Architectural design, I think the applicant can do probably a more holistic job in describing the architectural features of the site and whatnot. You know, we did have our, the same consultant architect who did the waiver requests, peer review, also did our architectural design review for this and found that the quality, overall quality of this, of the designs of the buildings are very much of high quality, and they're consistent throughout the project, whether they're Building One or Building Two, or even the townhomes, rowhouses have the same type of feel of a Spanish Revival style of architecture. Looking at the, what these, this development will look like from the street level. So if you look from Mary Avenue, you can see this is Building One will look like. So if you come down Mary, I guess southeastbound, here's Building One, here's Building Two behind the townhomes, which are right here, and then rowhouses, building over here, which is adjacent to 85. From Stevens Creek going westbound, basically if you're standing at the Enzo College, you most likely to see something similar to this. Building One right here, Building Two, Townhomes, Rowhouses. And what you see over here and to kind of illustrate what's, what the, what the architect or what the developer was trying to say early on in terms of, at least as part of the justification for the waivers was that you do have this type of transition to the lower-hided Glenn Book apartment buildings and single-family who are further up Mary Avenue with these 30-foot tall buildings right here and just concentrating the height and density really on the eastern end to have that better flow. Tree removal replacement, the development president removed and replaced 74 protected development trees. Fourteen of those trees are co-sly oaks with trunk diameters ranging between 11 to 51 inches. Other fourteen co-sly oaks, four will be relocated on site. One of the things that we discussed, and we also had our city arborist peer review, their arborist report as well, was that, you know, relocating trees, in fact, the bigger the tree, the more difficult it is to relocate them anywhere, they are more likely to, to not have a long-term, or survive in the long-term. So that was one concern that they have, but, you know, the, we, we were supportive of the applicant being willing to relocate four of those trees on site. The applicant has also proposed to replace and remove trees with 386, 314 on site and 74 off-site. As you can see by through this table, kind of a breakdown of the protected trees that have been removed, their sizes, what would be, in accordance with Chapter 14 of the municipal code, what they would have to be replaced with. So with all the trees being removed, the 24-inch box replacements would have to be 104 and 36-inch blocks would have to be three. What we're seeing is that the applicant is actually proposing to replace 287 24-inch boxes with 17 36-inch boxes. Excuse me. So traffic circulation, parking analysis, with the existing conditions on site, if the oaks was, was fully occupied, you see daily trips as minus credits and whatnot, 2,200. The senior enhanced version, which is this one, you'd see those daily trips reduced to 1,462 with a difference of 747. That also, you also see slight differences or between the AM and PM peak trips hours. These are all reflected in the EIR as well. The city's density bonus ordinance in compliance with the state law allows density bonus projects optioned to use alternate parking standards for residential units, mark rated and affordable based on bedroom count. In this case, the bedroom count would be 0.5 per bedroom. This would not apply to the non-residential portions of the development, including the retail and memory care facilities. So applying this standard, the applicant would only need to provide 383 spaces, what they propose is 463 parking spaces. Best intended map, the best intended map would divide the property into two parcels, one at 4.7 acres and one at 3.1 acres. The 4.7 acre parcel beyond the west, the 3.1 parcel beyond the east. What we see as part of this best intended map is, is a bike route on the west side, which would have access to the cross-development route from Mary to Stevens Creek Boulevard. This would be accomplished through a viad easement along the western driveway as well. There's also pedestrian easement on the sidewalk, the private sidewalk as well. Stevens Creek Boulevard upgrades include detached Class IV bike lanes and other improvements. A little bit about the project history, the application came in in May 17, 2018. The applicant submitted this application and on July 23, 2019, and evaluated, it was even, excuse me, it was deemed complete on July 23, 2019, and this was evaluated on the draft environmental impact report. On February 2020, the applicant submitted a senior enhanced alternative that was evaluated as a feasible alternative in the final environmental impact report or final EIR. This would be an increased senior housing alternative. On April 22, 2020, the applicant requested that the senior enhanced alternative be considered as the proposed project. Although amassing the building square footage and overall exterior appearance of virtually down to previous project, unit count has been increased. So physically, really nothing changed between the, very little physically has actually changed between the, the various iterations of the project. Environmental review, they found the following potentially significant impacts that could be mitigated. Air quality, biological resources, which is basically looking at nesting birds while, during the construction. Essentially, all of these bulleted items are impacts of what happened during the construction phase of the project. So biological resources would be when you remove trees or plant, or even during the project, you, you, you check to make sure that there's no nesting birds during certain times of the year. Terms of the cultural tribal, cultural and tribal resources and the tribal culture resources or geology and soil, anything that's paleontological or historical that's dug up, construction would stop at least in that portion of the site, and you'd have to bring in a certified archaeologist or paleontologist to look at those resources to determine when the project can continue or any impact that the development might have on those items that are found. Again, construction noise. And the last item is, is ensuring through, through our sanitary district that the wastewater, that this, the utility service system to handle wastewater dispersment of the, of the project. And we do have our, our consultant from Placeworks, Terry McCracken, in attendance tonight. If you have any specific questions about the environmental impacts or the EIR process at all, she'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. So environmental review, this went to the April 16, 2020 ERC meeting, when the, where the environmental review committee determined on a 5-0 vote that the project may have significant impacts on the environment, requiring a preparation of the EIR for the city council to consider This, as this project is considered a housing project, it's subject to the Housing Accountability Act. What this does is limit the, limits the ability of a city to deny or impose certain conditions on a housing development project when project implies with applicable objective general plans, zoning, subdivision standards, criteria. And again, this project is considered a housing development project under HHA because it is a mixed-use development consisting of residential and non-residential uses with at least two-thirds of square footage designated for residential uses. The project is either consistent with the city's justice standard or has applied, as this one has done, for waivers and or concessions or concessions under density bonus law. If this does, as this project does follow in the Housing Accountability Act, the city may disprove the project if both are found, the project will have a specific adverse impact upon the public health, safety, or unless the project is disapproved or approved upon the condition that the project developed at a lower density, and no feasible method of satisfactorily mitigating or avoiding the adverse impact exists, okay, which the staff had found neither would apply. One of the concerns that we heard from the community was, you know, as this project is made up of two separate parcels, each parcel a separate programming, with the eastern parcel being more of a senior, high-density senior development, where the western parcel being a lower-density, non-age-restricted, for-sale development of townhomes, rowhouses, you know, the possibilities of one being sold off and the program completely changing. And how do we, how do we ensure that this project is connected via the entitlement? So staff had come together and added a condition of approval of the development permit resolution that talks about the concurrent development, ensuring concurrent development of the projects, the various programming elements of the project. The first part of this resolution that requires a senior BMR units be, to be completed or achieve the affordable senior housing milestones before the city will issue a certificate of occupancy for the 66th rowhouse or townhouse. Now, remember, there's 88 rowhouses and townhouses. So for, for them to even complete or sell off or occupy up to the 66th rowhouse or townhouse that, that the BMR units, you have to complete or achieve what is defined as affordable senior housing milestone. Conversely, the, the, the condition of approval will require that at least 10 other rowhouses and townhouses are constructed before the city will issue a final certificate of occupancy for Building Two, which again is the BMR, the senior BMR building. Again, this, and again, the, the purpose of this, this bullet point of the, of the condition of approval is that it ensures that the, that the developer will, will build out those townhomes and not, you know, at least come back later on with another owner and try to develop it at a higher density. One thing that we did, that was added, that staff added at the end, was the city manager may approve a modified construction schedule if timing requirement creates unreasonable delays in the issuance of certificate of occupancy or receipt of final inspections for the rowhouse, townhouse units. Again, the developer would have to provide satisfactory assurance that the senior BMR units will be completed prior to completion of 75% or in this case, 66 rowhouse, townhouse units.
So can I interrupt? What, what satisfactory assurance?
What? So that would be something similar to, could be a deposit, could be a bond, that would be determined at the time of request.
That would be determined later?
It, it, it could be, and again, it's, it would be through the city manager.
But if there's, oh, sorry.
Then if, so if then, if they, there is any, they need to change anything, it's the city manager that will permit them to make any change, right?
Yes, and again, it's not changing the programming of the site, Councilmember Chow, it's more of the timing of when buildings can be developed and whatnot. So again, it's not a carte blanche to say, oh, no, we're going to put 3,000 apartments on, on the western parcel. It's more like, you know, it can be provided things that, that would, that the developer can bring up. So it's not changing the programming, it's essentially just changing the timing of certain completion elements of the project.
So at which point will there be sufficient change that it will come to the council?
Well, at that point, you know, the council, through this condition of approval, will give the city manager that discretion to say, you know, this is acceptable, no, this is not acceptable, you have to abide by the first part, portion of this condition of approval. And again, if the city attorney's office, if you want to piggyback on, on what I'm about to say is that, I guess, could the, could the city manager bring this back to council to revise a condition of approval at her discretion?
Yeah, I, I definitely think that would be a possibility, and we could, you know, also talk about potentially modifying some of that language and be, if there were suggestions for additional markers or guardrails. But again, it really is just related to this concurrent development condition, not anything beyond it in terms of the city manager's authority to approve a different schedule.
So where did the number 10 come from and requires at least 10 of the townhouses? I mean, why couldn't it be 50 or something else?
That's a good question, Mayor. You know, this, this commission of approval was, was researched through the city attorney's office extensively, and we found this commission of approval had been applied to, to a certain developments in the Bay Area. I could not, unfortunately, I can't tell which development that is or which city had implemented that condition of approval, but this is based upon, I'm lost for a word.
It, it was based on a real-life example from another development. And just to kind of clarify our thinking behind the number 10 in that subsection two, this is really a concurrent development condition. So typically, where you have an affordable housing component of a development, the primary concern is to ensure that the affordable housing units get developed in a timely way or with a bond or other commitment so that the applicant doesn't simply develop the, the market rate units and then run out of steam and not complete the affordable. So that's what subsection little i is, is ensuring that the affordable component actually gets developed. gets developed and incentivizing that by saying you're not going to get the certificate of occupancy for the 66th rowhouse and beyond unless you complete the BMR units in building two. What little subsection two is really getting at is some concerns that, that, you know, we have two separate, they're asking for a subdivision into two separate parcels. As John mentioned, it's kind of two distinct components, the senior portion and then the non-age-restricted portion. And there seemed to be, you know, some comments and interest in making sure that the townhouse piece actually was developed as approved here as well and that the city didn't end up with the senior parcel being fully developed at the higher density. And then the townhouse piece maybe getting sold off and a new owner coming in to request a different design or approval. And so by ensuring that the applicant has to complete 10 rowhouse townhouse units before they can get final sign-off on the BMR units, we felt that this condition provided enough incentives and mechanisms for enforcement to be confident that the townhouse piece would also get developed as proposed here and the city wouldn't see a request for a new project on that parcel.
So there's no state law that, where that number 10 came from, just from some other similar project or?
That's correct.
Not so similar project?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any, anything that precludes us from raising that? Would it be illegal to raise it?
We did communicate with the applicant about this condition of approval. I think there are probably some limits to how high you would make that, just because we wouldn't want to make the affordable piece infeasible unintentionally through raising that number. So that would be my only consideration there and I think it would probably be prudent to let the applicant weigh in on that.
But you don't have any hard limit? Okay. All right. Sorry for interrupting. Continue.
Can we be more clear on satisfactory assurance in the conditions of approval? Because this seems so vague. It could be, oh, yeah, I'm going to do it. Nothing reaches. So what exactly that means?
My guess would be, and again, Winter, correct me if I'm wrong, a satisfactory assurance could also be, we define in the condition of approval.
Unless the, how long turn that's used, that people understand that means something really uncertain. I don't know.
No, I think we could provide additional, you know, examples of what satisfactory assurance would be. I think that could be a point for council deliberations if there's something additional there and we could also consider some suggestions to make on that when you get to the deliberation point.
So wouldn't the city manager already has something in mind because she will be the person who actually decide, right? And she must have the experience.
You know, we could, I would certainly be willing to talk offline with the city manager about that. But again, this was a condition that was sort of in the event that the primary condition became infeasible. So this provided, subsection B provided a way to deal with future infeasibility. It wasn't sort of the principal condition we were relying on here.
I think it's termed satisfactory assurance because that assurance can come in many different forms. It can come through a written justification. It could come, written justification coupled with, I don't know, a diagram. It could be a bond. It could be any number of things. So you, we could, you know, put a list together of what form satisfactory assurance might come in, but I would think that I would be looking at something that had to validate whatever claim the developer was making in order to make this, need this change to the schedule somehow.
Yeah, I hope it's not just a letter.
No, it will have to be some sort of, yeah, it's going to be, depending upon why, the documents would have to be substantially justified.
Heather?
You are talking about justification in case they need to change. What I mean is satisfactory assurance that they will deliver, it will complete. Because it needs to, we need that assurance before, prior to the 75%, right? So when townhouses, rowhouses are almost at 75% completion, what assurance we would need for the senior BMR? That's what I would, no, not just a letter.
And again.
Don't know what's customary to do.
Well, and as John pointed out, I guess I would make two points. One, it is the city manager that has the discretion. The applicant does not have a say and the city manager could require a bond, some other financial assurance that would ensure that the senior BMR units would be completed before 75% of the rowhouses or townhouses. So that would be another tool the city manager could use.
So can we make that more clear in the conditions of approval because city manager could be, could change, right? If we don't specify, it could become just a letter.
Yes, we could specify that.
Okay.
Okay. Next slide. So it talks about the outreach.
Maybe one quick question on that previous slide?
Sure.
So when we're talking about that condition of approval, the question that I kind of had in the back of my head for quite a while, how many years are the senior or the BMR units required? So from a BMR standpoint, is it 50 years that they are required to stay in the BMR state? And then the senior units, is there any requirement that they stay senior units?
So that's a good question, Councilmember Willie. So 36 of the units, the senior BMR units are 99 years, where 12 of them are going to be 50 years. So that's, so we do have that as part of our program. So they have to sign and record that agreement with the city.
And for the senior units that are not BMR, is there any requirement that prevents them? Again, Main Street went from a senior development to a market rate development.
That's a good question as well. Any change, any major change in a program like that, you know, I'm assuming would have to come back to the prior decision-making body as a modification.
Can the city attorney simply confirm that that would be the case?
I would agree that this is being proposed as a senior facility and so a change to the operation like that away from being senior would require revision to their permits. The affordability is deed restricted and there are conditions requiring the BMR plan to be presented and recorded. So that is locked into place for the years, the period of time that John mentioned.
I would refer to Councilmember Willie, I would refer to condition 10 of the development permit as a BMR unit in terms of affordability.
There will be deed restriction recorded for the BMR unit for that?
Yes, yes. So condition nine is a BMR agreement, which would contain the BMR units in terms of affordability and the way the condition, sorry, go ahead.
Do we also record the waivers and concessions they receive in the deed restriction?
No.
The reason I ask is San Francisco and Berkeley both require that. So they record that in the parcel?
And that's, that's not a condition in here. We could consider requiring recordation of the conditions of approval, which is something that frequently happens. Again, we were attempting through the concurrent development condition to set up the incentives and these enforcement mechanisms to basically ensure that these two pieces get developed as proposed concurrently. But we could require that the conditions be recorded.
Okay, let's keep going.
So I do have question for the concession and waivers. Do I ask them now or do I? I was hoping to the later, but then this has been so long. What do we want to do?
Yeah, I mean, if you can hold them till after the public comment, that would be great.
So we don't ask clarifying questions?
Well, you can. You can ask clarifying questions while we go along, but, you know, try to hold the rest of them till afterwards, whatever.
Okay. Okay. So again, this project would notice citywide via postcard, also e-notifications prior to hearings. Public comment, so I try to go through the public comments and I guess compartmentalize some of the issues that were brought up, either for support or any concerns of the folks who are against the project or any some, just some general comments where someone made a comment of the project, but neither indicated it, they're supportive of it or against it. And again, some of these folks, it can be one person making a comment, but they made it for different reasons of, you know, comparability or traffic or in many cases, a couple groups such as the Chamber of Commerce and Cupertino for all, as a group submitted support for the need for senior housing. And so they count as actually only one in this case. As you see, much of the concerns for the, from the public, at least that we received, again, this is not counting the comments for the EIR, this is counting for comments that came subsequent to the EIR. Much of it was for the traffic and safety, traffic safety, height and setback waivers of the project. And support was really centered around the need for housing, especially the need for senior housing as well. And one person came in for support because of the bike ped amenities. And much of the bike ped community that sent in comments were, neither indicated they were supporting the project or against the project, but the need to, you know, possibly ensure that this project would have bike ped amenities. So our conclusion as consistent as written in staff report, the staff recommends approval of the project because a project in condition of approval address concerns related to proposed development and all the findings for approval of the proposed project, consistent with chapters 14.18, 18.28, 19.56, 19.156, and 19.168 of the Cupertino municipal code may be made. To the extent that concerns remain about the development's height and slope line, the State Density Bonus Law and Housing Accountability Act constrain the city's ability to address these concerns and the project meets the standards that qualify for protection under these laws. And that concludes our presentation.
Okay. Wow.
Can I go back to the page where you talk about planning commission hearing?
Sure.
That's the page, I don't know.
All right. And then we need to go to public comment right after that.
I want to clarify whether, because the project is supposed to comply with standard and the staff is, okay. So planning commissions, they are, they denied the project because BMR units were not dispersed throughout the project. And planning commission didn't, did, where did our city code say? But my understanding is planning commission do require 15% of BMR units for townhouses and rowhouses and that's a requirement of our city code, that BMR units of, we require BMR units of, need to be compatible with market rate in unit size and number of bedrooms and it needs to be dispersed. And dispersed is throughout the project, not just between the building one and two. And a planning commissioner told me, their recommendation was that this person should be throughout the project, including townhouses and rowhouses, not just between one and two. So.
Right.
Why are they allowed to?
Because they took a concession, if I'm not mistaken.
So I, I'll start off and try and answer this question from Councilmember Chow. So if, if you remember, so May 12, the planning commission recommended approving the project 5-0. And at that time, the programming of the site had 39 units, BMR units in building two and nine BMR units in building one. And again, it's consistent with the waiver not to disperse those units in the townhome or rowhouses for the reason that, you know, age restrictive developments can't be designed the same way that non-age restrictive developments can be designed. That being said, when.
But nothing, nothing, nothing prevents, nothing requires all BMR units to be senior, right? We could have 15% of townhomes in the rowhouses for seniors, three bedrooms. That would be great for teaching and for sale. I'm assuming these are for sale, by the way. That's not, is that for sale? That's not written anywhere. But if this were for sale below market rate units, wouldn't that be something our community needs also? So why is that, why is that our code not enforced?
If I could jump in here, John, this is a decision for the city council to make whether the council believes the requested dispersion waiver is justified. The applicant's position has been that it is because they are proposing senior BMR units and state and federal law prevent them from mixing senior BMR units into the non-age restricted townhouses. And that waiver rationale was proposed to the planning commission and was recommended in the staff report the first time the project went to the planning commission back in May. So that's, that's the record here, but it will be the city council's decision whether.
The first time, my understanding is planning commission didn't have sufficient legal representation to provide them sufficient legal support. And the first time the operative evaluation also was not complete because only senior one was provided to them. So they were forced to make a decision based on insufficient information. So that decision shouldn't be used to justify anything today.
And my point is just, is the city council's decision and the city council is free to consider the waiver, whether the waiver is justified.
Okay. So is there anything in our code that require all the BMR units to be CMR, BMR?
To be senior.
To be senior, yeah.
No, that is the proposal that the applicant has made is to make them all senior BMR, but it is not a requirement of your code.
So we could require 15% BMR of different unit size and bedroom per our BMR menu.
Well, the for sale, we have a 20% requirement, remember?
Oh, but that was just adopted today.
Oh. Oh, okay, so maybe this project preceded that. But yeah, Councilmember Chow has a good point. I mean, I would think any developer could say, well, I'll make all the BMR senior, because then I can make them smaller, and, you know, I'm gonna get, get out of the whole comparable thing, and this is gonna save me a lot of money. But is there anything that prevents us from requiring that the BMR units, you know, be included to things like the row houses and townhouses?
Yeah, because the site is four times bigger for the, for the townhouse and row houses, it's 20,000 square foot compared to ours 500, right?
Um, yes, so, um, it, it is an option to consider. It would require the city council to deny the requested waiver under the state density bonus law, and I think you've articulated a reason, uh, why the waiver could be denied, and I'm sure the.
But waiver, this is only, also, they don't qualify, uh, they don't comply with the city standard.
Well, they are requesting a waiver of the city standard.
Right.
To allow them to not put BMR units in the, the, the townhouse.
And then, why is that a waiver? That's another thing. So, let's say if they should be comparable in size, that means five units of, let's say, every one unit of the townhome actually equal to four units of senior unit in size. So if they would like to do it in exchange, they, they should provide five times, uh, four times more BMR units, not 15%, but four times of that. So, then that's comparable, right? So just an example, so, they actually got a lot of advantage by saying we only provide senior BMR. Then another thing is the waiver, it needs to be physically excluding, that they, they can justify for a waiver if the requirement of having unit in townhome would physically preclude the project, a BMR unit in townhome. But for a townhouse or a row house, to make a unit into BMR of the exact same size as we require, the exact same quality as we require, oh, they, they don't need to do anything physically, right?
Yes, and again, the, the physical preclusion comes in by the fact that they are proposing senior BMR units, which they assert are physically precluded from being included in the townhouse. I would also note that, um, an additional alternative council could consider, um, to, denying the waiver, and I think perhaps this is what Councilmember Chow was alluding to, uh, when you said that this isn't physical preclusion, um, but it might, uh, you know, they, they did request a concession, uh, and provided evidence of a concession to allow them to not, uh, comply with the dispersion requirement between the two senior buildings. And in submitting that request for concession, uh, the applicant's attorney did comment that, um, you know, the concession would result in cost savings, because putting the, uh, senior BMR units in building one would be more expensive than putting it in building two. And there was a reference in the letter, uh, suggesting that putting the BMR units in the townhomes would also be more expensive than putting them in, uh, the building two. So, um, that would be another, um, option to explore, whether there was, um, a basis and a request for a concession to cover the, that, that dispersion requirement.
Yeah.
So, so Winter, so this means, the theory is, if anything is ever more expensive, you can get a waiver to get out of the city's BMR requirements.
Um, concession has a limit. And you have a limited number.
Sorry, can you let her answer?
Yeah. Uh, the financial, the cost reduction is only sufficient to justify a concession, and under state density bonus law, uh, for this project, for example, they only get two. It's limited in number. Waivers, you, are unlimited in number, and in order to show that you're entitled to a waiver, you have to demonstrate that the standard at issue would physically preclude your project.
Okay.
So it's different bases.
Right, okay, so the, yeah, there would be no physical preclusion of putting some BMR in the townhouse, townhomes, rowhomes, but you would need, if you didn't want to do that, and we wanted it, they'd have to use a concession to get out of it.
Yeah. So the legislative intent is not to allow a limited number of exceptions. They allow at most one or two or three concessions based on the, the percentage of low-income housing they provide. And this project now qualify for at most two concessions. And the legislative intent for waiver is unlimited, but then that means you really need to prove the project physically cannot fit. You cannot arbitrarily make things up.
Can we go to public comment now?
Could I just get?
Sure, go.
One point clarified. So I, I've, I've taken interest in this question of, okay, you have these row homes, right? Or townhomes or rowhomes, variously, of 88 of them. And I think what you explained is, because they've used one of their two chits, um, they are, they, under the, under California law, are allowed to take what we would normally require, 15% of those homes be BMR, and instead move the requirement over to, move that to less expensive apartments in building two. Is that correct? That are also age-restricted?
Yes, they could use a concession to, um, basically modify the city's BMR dispersion requirement, so that they, uh, right now, they're relying on a waiver for all the reasons that we've discussed.
Right.
But if the city council were to determine the waiver wasn't justified, an alternative way of, um, uh, modifying that dispersion requirement as it applies to the townhomes would be to use a concession, and for that, um, they would simply need to provide reasonable documentation of an actual and identifiable cost reduction. That would be, uh, the result of, um, putting those BMR units in building two instead of in the townhomes.
One, one can surely believe that, that it's a cost reduction.
Right.
And they've, they have how many concessions in this project so far?
They have two. I mean, they have requested one.
One.
And.
And they could request another one.
They could request another one.
All right, so this is, I, I, okay, that helps, thank you.
Right, so the bottom line is.
On with public comment.
Is we can't get.
Before we go to public comment, I'd like to say that I really like this project, I like the way it looks.
Well, this is time for our question, not deliberation.
All right, Leon, we need to go to public comment now.
I ask all these questions because I want to be sure we follow the law when we approve a project like this. Okay.
Okay, we're gonna go to public comment now, I've got six hands, I've got three, four, five, six hands raised. Uh, first, we go to Kitty Moore, welcome Kitty.
Good evening, Mayor. You there?
We are here, we can hear you.
Excellent. Okay, um, so during the July 14th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting regarding Westport, as reflected in the August 18th, 2020 staff report to city council, the commission recommended denial of the project. However, pages five and six of your staff report do not reflect the discovery that the planning commission, um, found that the townhouses and rowhouses would also need to have below-market rate units, which you have also stumbled upon. The staff report to the Planning Commission's July 14th, 2020 meeting only recognized the needed, the need for concession, um, for consolidating all the senior BMR units into building two, and there was no mention of the lack of BMR townhouses and rowhouses to the planning commission, or an explanation regarding building two's height and setback issues in relation to density bonus law. I would like to make sure that you understand the difference between a waiver and a concession. Building two has no density bonus units in it, the building has clustered senior BMR units in it, and the applicant requested a concession for the non-dispersal of these units. However, they are requesting waivers for the height and setback requirements when the requested height is not related to the addition of density bonus units whatsoever. The height and setback reductions in development standards are therefore concessions and not waivers. The townhouses and rowhouses have no complimentary BMR units, therefore a concession for not having any BMR units. Among them, which could accommodate families and school-aged children, would need to be requested. Further, there was one item in the EIR which troubles me, is that, um, that of noise, and I understand that you have ambient noise for the project, which is above, uh, which we would ordinarily find allowable for such a project, and I'm wondering what your comments are for that. Um, I just want to make sure I've touched on all of the items that I have notes for. And I did want to make sure, you know, is Winter King the developer's attorney, or is she working for the city? And perhaps you could clarify that for me, um, because this, I wasn't privy to her comments during the planning commission meetings, and I'd like to also state that I am representing myself only. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kitty. So I think, Winter, you touched on one of her points earlier, saying that they get the, they get the height and setback for the whole project. Is that true?
Um, yes, through the mayor, and, um, just so I'm clear, um, Cupertino protocol, um, we respond to questions during the public comment, staff does, is that the normal, the normal process, though?
Yeah.
No, it's not.
No, during oral communications, it's not, but if there's a specific question.
Our agenda, we do.
Right, it's an agendized item, there's a specific question, you know, it's more efficient if we can just respond to.
Yeah.
Heather's getting ready to respond.
Okay, go ahead, Heather. You're muted.
We can't hear you.
There, we can't hear you.
You're muted, Heather.
We can't hear you.
Okay, sorry. Um, to, it, to answer the first question, um, questions to and from the, and answers to the public go through the mayor, per our rules, so that is up to the, um, the chair's discretion to direct, um, questions and responses. I'd also just like to point out, um, Mayor, that our, our hearing flow chart usually has, um, presentations by the applicant prior to, um, public comment, if we wanted to.
I don't have that flow chart, I only had it for the, um, for the hearing on the reconsideration.
The second page of that includes the, the general hearing flow chart, and I apologize, it's usually printed on our agendas, which during Zoom meetings, we don't.
I did not see it printed on the agenda.
No, yes, uh, for some reason, it hasn't happened with our, uh, with the electronic, um, publishing. So, if you have the, uh, flow chart for the reconsideration item, it is the second page of that, once that you would get to the hearing.
Oh, okay, right, I don't, um, okay, very good, so let's have the applicant present now, then, before we continue with public comment. Um, right, I wish I had had that flow chart, okay.
I, I believe we, the community development director.
No, um, the.
Said it earlier.
Oh, okay, okay, there's the flow chart for hearing items, okay. Um, let me go to the next page. Okay, so we had the staff reports, okay, the applicant can make their presentation now for up to 10 minutes, so is the applicant ready?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, um, is ready, and this is Mark Tricini with.
Okay, I'll start the timer now, go ahead.
Great, a good evening, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, members of the city council. Uh, KT Urban is very pleased to bring a housing project that meets the needs of the city of Cupertino. Uh, this project has been carefully designed to address three distinct housing types that are needed in Cupertino and blend beautifully into a cohesive neighborhood. KT Urban has been fortunate to align our interests with two premier housing firms that bring building expertise and required capital to construct this project immediately upon city council approval. I would like to introduce Matt Witty, who is a principal with Related California. Matt will share some background on his firm and their relationship with Atria Senior Living. Following Matt will be Randy Beckerman. Randy is the senior vice president of Atria Senior Living. Randy will provide an overview of Atria, along with senior housing market data and their commitment to building in Cupertino. Matt, let me turn it over to you now, thank you.
Uh, yes, uh, good morning, I think it is morning, good morning, Mayor and, and council members, uh, I am Matt Witty, a principal with Related California. Uh, next slide, please. Just real briefly about Related, we are a 40-plus-year-old company with over 30 years here in California, a very active, substantial development, uh, track record, built, uh, many thousands of units, both market rate and affordable. I think we are the largest affordable, uh, developer in the state, California, built over 12,000 affordable units. Uh, the company has, in many different product types, uh, next slide, please. Uh, and, uh, recently, about two and a half years ago, we entered the senior assisted living business in a national partnership that we formed with Atria Senior Living, but with a particular focus on urban and town center suburban locations exactly like Westport Cupertino. We currently have two projects underway, under construction in San Francisco and in New York City, uh, with other projects in other cities around the country at various pre-development stages. We've been looking for, uh, the last several years for a site in the South Bay, and the Westport Cupertino site really meets so many of our criteria, where we're very excited to be on the cusp of potentially an approved project. Our particular focus, and it, it speaks to the specific physical needs and operational needs of the building that my colleague Randy Beckerman will talk about in a minute, in a minute, are to build really the highest-quality assisted living and memory care facility in the state. And each of the projects that we are pursuing and, and taking underway, we have that objective, we are long-term owners with patient capital, and if we were to get this project approved, as Mark indicated, um, we would be going full speed ahead with the goal of being under construction by the end of next year, potentially sooner. I would just conclude, next slide, please, um, with some data that I think you'll see elsewhere in some of the public comment, it certainly came up in the planning commission, uh, that, um, unlike other types of, uh, real estate development uses, there is no question about the demand for senior assisted living. Uh, the, the statistics that are, are shown in this slide speak to this silver wave that is coming of population over 75 over the next 10 years. And, um, at the same time as that is happening, unfortunately, the caregivers available to that population cohort has been shrinking, which just puts an even greater demand on facilities of the type that we're contemplating building here. Um, so go to the next slide, please. So, when we, when we were looking for a facility in the South Bay, we've been looking for the criteria that this site, uh, includes, adjacency to a senior facility, uh, adjacency to across the street, the Performing Arts Center, and an active, uh, younger community that our residents can integrate into, adjacency to a park, to public transit, all of those things, and, and, and I think the layout that, uh, KT Urban has put together here, which we have had a hand in, in helping create, uh, allows our building one to integrate within the site as well as around the site. So, um, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Randy, since we have limited time, but suffice to say that we are very excited about the project and look forward to, uh, getting underway with it as quickly as possible.
Thanks, Matt, hi everybody.
Hi, everybody. Randy Beckerman with Atria Senior Living. For those of you who don't know, Atria, I think we're widely regarded as the highest quality assisted living operator in the country. We have a track record of exceptional care for our residents and really strong relationships with our neighborhood partners. We operate in 26 states, seven Canadian provinces. We have a very big, major focus in California, where we're one of the state's largest operators, including the Bay Area, where we operate about 12 communities. As Matt mentioned, in 2018, we formed our venture with Related to develop a new generation of high-quality assisted living communities across the country. We're really excited about the opportunity to be able to bring one of those communities to Cupertino, which has historically been one of the highest-occupied senior housing markets in the nation. So what is the product and what are we planning on building? You know, Atria and Atria-related products are really focused on the provision of licensed assisted living and memory care, housing and services. And in this case, the building would be licensed by the California Department of Social Services, with whom we have a very good relationship. This is a rental product. It is not a CTRC. There are not six-to-seven-figure buy-ins upfront. And as required by licensure, rents for housing within a licensed assisted living community include not only the housing itself, but meals, activities, housekeeping, transportation, and other associated services, as well as access to in-house care assistance with activities of daily living. And what are those? Those include bathing, grooming, dressing, medication management, amongst others. In addition to that, we will be providing memory care services. And those services are provided to individuals with cognitive impairments, whether it be dementia or Alzheimer's disease. And those services are provided within a secured and separate area of the building with dedicated staff, as well as dedicated amenities and dedicated outdoor space to provide our residents with safety and security and to prevent elopement. You know, these services are really an integral part and component to our care program and really allows our residents to transition within the building to the extent their cognitive abilities should deteriorate while they're living with us. So, you know, this is a slide that lays out really what the spectrum of senior housing is, or what the catch-all of senior housing is. And off to the left, there's age-restricted housing of senior apartments. And that includes no services and no additional overhead and staffing versus a typical multifamily building. And as you move from the left-hand side of the spectrum to the right-hand side of the spectrum, obviously staffing, overhead costs exponentially increase, and things become much more challenging and complicated from an operational perspective. In addition, I'd just say that Atria puts a really enormous focus on resident neighborhood engagement. During their move-in process, we'll go through what we call resident discovery, where we determine what the existing interests of a residence are, or what their future interests might be. And then we look to figure out how we can integrate, really thread those interests into our activities, our community events, and other continuing education. You know, for example, to the extent we found out that a resident had a fondness for impressionist art, we might look to Deanna College to try and find a art history professor or art professor who can provide classes on how to paint water release. And then we'd host a, sort of, an art festival and throw a big party and invite the community into the building. So we really strive for that interaction between our residents, our community, and the greater neighborhood. And, you know, that's a typical Atria pillar, and especially a pillar of everything that we're doing with the Related team. So, you know, I just wrap up by saying that the Related team and the Atria team are extremely excited about working with KT Urban to bring really what we think is a world-class and forward-thinking senior living option to the residents of Cupertino now and into the future.
All right, thank you. That was just about exactly 10 minutes. Very good. So now we can go, and I apologize for not-
Are we allowed to ask the applicant questions?
Ah, sure. Okay.
Okay, great. So my first question is, if somebody needs skilled nursing care, are they then transferred to another facility outside the system?
Correct. If you saw the spectrum of senior housing, off to the right-hand side of that spectrum would be skilled nursing, or nursing home, if you will, so.
Great. And would you mind putting the slide back up that has the, the overall Westport Cupertino site plan? It's the one that's the bird's-eye view that shows Stevens Creek Boulevard and so forth.
Does that work? Can you, are you seeing it now? Hold on, there we go.
And I'm not sure which of, who, which of you my question ought to be directed to. I'm interested in talking about the southwest corner of this project. And if we, if we could zoom in, I don't know if that's possible, but I have studied this plan. It's found in page two of Appendix Y, the plan set. And I note that city staff has taken some great care and paid to, on behalf of the community, try to get a, a bike way through the west side of the project. And we've agreed on a Class III bike way that would go through the driveway and so forth, with the intention of getting out to the corner at Stevens Creek and the northbound Unramp to Highway 85. But if you take a look at the design of the path that leads us from that driveway area down to the corner, you can see that a bicycle having, desiring to traverse between those points would have three right-angle turns to make. And so my question for Mr. Tercini or the associates that he's working with are, could we redesign this to straighten this out as, as a part of the final project work?
Councilmember Sinks, Mark Tercini here. I'm, I'm happy to have our civil engineer, Kim Lee Horn, work with the public works staff to address that comment that you just made there. We tried to create a, a pocket park in that location, but I believe there's an opportunity to do exactly what you are referencing, to make it an easier process to take a bicycle through that location. So we're happy to address that directly.
It's very amenable to such a condition. Yeah, I think it's possible to have a park as well as get a better flow than, than the, than the existing rendering would, would suggest. And if the intention really is to allow bikes to tran, traverse that easily, I appreciate that very much. That concludes my questions for now. Thank you very much.
Okay. Did anyone else have any questions of the applicant? Am I muted here?
I have some questions. So where is the nearest other memory care unit near Cupertino?
Well, I know that there's some at Sunnyview, there's one at the Forum, there are a number of facilities in town that have memory care.
Memory care also?
I believe Sunnyview is the closest one. Councilmember Chow.
I, I could also toss out Prospect and Lawrence Expressway. There's a tiered senior development there where my uncle finished his days, and his final was in the memory care unit there.
Oh.
So again, that's Prospect and Lawrence Expressway. Yep.
That's good. And so for this one, we will have 27 units. They have quite a few amenities, so they will occupy about one floor of the building one, right?
That's correct.
So it's one entire floor with all the amenities?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the, and can you talk about the amenities that's available? I remember there's something on the rooftop.
Councilmember Chow. Correct. Our architect, Stephen O'Hawber, can put a slide on the screen now that will show you that memory care floor and the amenities that are provided on that particular floor. To comment on the actual operation, I would let Randy Beckerman and/or Matthew Whitty to, to comment directly on that.
Can everyone see the, see the screen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Randy, do you want to comment?
Sure. Sorry, I thought Stephen was going to take him through the project. So the memory care portion of the floor starts at what you see as the elevator bank at the bottom. And that wall is actually a secured egress exit out of the memory care portion of the building. These are labeled as LG, apologize for that, but that's called life guidance, which is Atria's nomenclature for memory care. But the entire unit sort of wraps the corridor, and then the amenity spaces for the memory care residents are concentrated at the, you know, northern location of the building. And within that component, there's a living room, an activity space, and a dining room with a kitchen where all the meals are prepared for the residents in memory care. Then there's additional back-of-house support spaces for nurse and medication storage, as well as the manager of the floor and other staff.
Okay, great. So what other amenities are there for the assisted living in Building One?
Yeah, the amenities are concentrated on the top floor. And there is a, you know, it's currently blocked out. There's a multipurpose room, which functions as an activities room. You'll have lectures in there and other things. A theater, which can also function and swing to host other speaking events, engagements, as well as continuing education and concerts and things like that. There's a library, which really gets used not only for quiet spaces to read, but also for card games and other activities as well. The wellness space is both our care staff and back-of-house functioning, as well as, you know, likely to be sort of spa space and other things like that. And there's a general living room, which is set up like a, you know, very comfortable common area with couches and tables that can be repurposed and used for many different ongoing functions. And then we have a full-scale fitness and yoga area with lockers for our residents. And in addition to that, you know, there will be some common area space in the lobby for additional seating and things like that, as well as a co-programmed festro or cafe that will, you know, function as both amenity and, you know, retail to the public.
So would these amenities be available for the people who live in Building Two, in the BMR senior unit?
So the amenities on the top floor of the building, no, because they're separate buildings. This is a residential care facility for the elderly, a licensed building, and you can't have other people coming in to utilize the amenities. The cafe, which we think swings, is both an amenity to the residents, but also an amenity to the public, that most certainly is accessible to anyone.
So then, what kind of amenity will be available for the BMR units?
I can speak to that. You know, we've built, as I mentioned, you know, over 12,000 units of BMRs in California over the last 30 years. And we are very proud of the design and the quality of these buildings, but very, very infrequently are there amenities. I mean, you're basically providing housing, as, as you can imagine by the price levels that were referenced in the staff report, to the low and very low-income residents. And it's just not feasible to also provide substantial amenities. Now, there will be some basic, in addition to the units themselves, there will be some basic shared common areas, which we haven't yet designed, but not anything like the services that are being provided in the state licensed assisted living facility.
Okay.
Councilmember Chow, I would also like to comment. If, Stephen, if you could go up to the rooftop terrace area that has been purposely designed in the BMR units to allow them the opportunity to have a very comfortable area to socialize and in, is, I believe, going to be quite a nice amenity for the, for the residents there. That was added as, when the architects went through and designed and redesigned the, the building to provide this rooftop deck area. And it has, also just helps with the, the, the flow of the, the building for the residents and gives them additional space to, to congregate.
One other comment I would make, Councilwoman, is that the central green, which is a natural congregating area for all residents of the project, the townhome owners, the rowhouse owners, the BMR residents, as well as those members of the assisted living facility that choose to go outside, and we hope that's as many as possible, really presents a unique opportunity within the site to mix both income levels as well as ages. And, and we intend, although it has not yet been fully fleshed out from a design point of view, we intend to utilize that to take advantage of the generally very good weather in Cupertino.
One question while you have that picture up. For that area in the middle of Building One, how many acres is that? Is that a half acre? Point six? Point seven?
Stephen, you want to address-
I'm not sure of the exact area. Approximately, I, I would take a guess that that's a little under a half an acre, maybe more like a third of an acre.
Yeah, roughly, if the buildings are roughly around 60 or so, 65, 70 square, 70 feet long, so we're looking at roughly over 200 feet sort of either direction. So they're pretty considerably large. I can show a rendering as well of, of the central courtyard space to give you maybe a little bit more idea of, of size here. So this is how the space would look in terms of being rendered out, with an area for recreation, some areas for tables along the perimeter of it, as well as just walking and circulation. And the general intent was to create it sort of like a, modeled after sort of a European piazza or plaza, so that the buildings sort of define the exterior of the space. It gives residents an ability to sort of take part in, you know, sort of the people watching and congregation, but also in terms of rigging the space with retail, it allows it to have a chance to have activity that happens not only in the perimeter inside the buildings, but also kind of creates opportunities to have potentially different functions out inside of, of the space, as well as just general recreation.
I'd also point out that it's, it's open to the west, so it should get a great deal of sunlight throughout a good portion of the day.
And one of the general features of the idea was to create this sort of central green promenade that is pedestrian-oriented, that is protected with the, the buildings on either side, that acts as a collecting green that takes people down with not only view, view vantage points, but also from circulation standpoint of pedestrians, to help reinforce and help make the, the development as a total more walkable and where people don't feel like they have to get out into their cars to- to get out into their cars to drive over to the retail section, that it sort of provides opportunities and amenities for just strolling through the development as well.
It's really nice that you have good amenities for Building 1, but then the intent of inclusionary BMR requirement is so that below residents of below-market-rate units can share the same amenity as anyone else, so that they are not second-class citizens in your development. That is the idea of having dispersing?
Right. But I would just comment that we certainly support that and be very happy to show you many examples where we've done that in conventional market-rate housing. As my colleague Randy Beckerman described, it's really not possible, given the fact that Building 1 is not a market-rate residence, multifamily residential building, not to take exception with the objective of the statute that you have, but it doesn't really lie in this particular case because of the unique nature of Building 1.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Although I will point out that, you know, that was the decision made by the project designer that to not do inclusionary BMR and to do 100% BMR in one building rather than dispersing it. So the fact that you end up without the amenities, you know, as a result of that...
But there's a reason, Mayor. It's not, we didn't just do it unilaterally to be difficult, it's because of the financing of two types of projects, it's very different, and the operational nature of Building 1 sort of precludes it. It's not that we are trying to be adverse to your objectives.
Okay.
I could add one more little tidbit. With regards to the senior below-market rate, there's also design components that are required by law that senior units require, not only from a physical standpoint, but also from a social standpoint, and the idea that the reason that they're grouped together in the building is because it allows them to be not only more accessible to the public amenities on that side of the site, but it also creates a social ability to have social gatherings. There's a lounge space that's earmarked for the residents of this below-market rate building, where if it's dispersed throughout the townhomes, the senior units become isolated, which goes against what the statutory requirements are.
You misunderstood. Senior units, of course, can be grouped together, but then the senior units, BMR units, could be dispersed between Building 1 and 2, both are seniors. And then if you disperse two townhome and rowhouses, then it would be non-senior BMR units. And those are possible.
So... Right, I understand that the financing is the reason, you know, it is like, it is what it is. However, I'll point out once again, just like the SB 35 project, we are ending up with a new project with zero below-market rate units for families. And this is, you know, it's not something, not something that many of us like, although I understand why, you know, why it's being done for the financing for the senior housing.
I mean, I would say that none of us actually like that. I have a question for the applicant, and it'll be my only question. Mark, would you be willing to forego attempting to invoke any future concession? Because you've utilized one, and there's one remaining. You know, there's a very heavy concern about not having inclusionary zoning within the rowhouses and townhomes. You know, I for one am not really compelled by the notion that an applicant can define what is not exclusively a senior housing project as being something that is exclusively in the purview of senior BMR. So I just, you know, something doesn't sit right with regard to the townhomes and the rowhouses not having any BMR, and I'm just asking as, you know, essentially a trade-off for that, whether the applicant, whether you would be willing to just forego your ability to invoke your other concession in the future on this project?
Councilmember Paul, I would have to defer to my land use attorney on that particular question, because it's very technical in nature. What I do want to make very clear, the townhomes will provide KT Urban the opportunity to build not only Building Number 1 with Atria in related, but also provide the gap financing that will be necessary for Building Number 2. That's exactly why we have it programmed the way we have it programmed. The townhomes provide the additional capital that is necessary to build the entire project out, and it was designed that way purposely. So we have arrangements with Atria and Related to provide additional capital into the project, not only the land component, but additional capital to allow that development to go forward. Working with whether or not it's related affordable or bridge housing, and we have Brad Widlin on the line with bridge housing as well, and Brad can go through in great detail on going after the capital sources, whether or not it's county funds or tax increment financing for Building Number 2, there's going to be a gap. That gap has to be made up, and that gap is not going to be made up by anyone other than KT Urban. And so that's exactly why we have it laid out, and that's exactly why we're not going to modify our program. If the program gets modified, the project will not go forward.
Yeah, no, I think that's, you know, a fair answer. I mean, it's not quite where I'd like to have it provided, you know, given the assurances, but, you know, I think if I bring forward a motion, I'll probably, you know, make it contingent upon utilizing the remaining concession. Thanks.
Okay. Can we go to public comment finally? Thank you. Lisa Warren, you are first.
I am at first, I thought I'd be last. So, Kirsten, can you put up that? Thank you, you're right on there. Okay. So I've asked previously and have a concern, but there's nowhere in the application, at least last time around when we were planning commission, there's no language in the application, which is where, to me, it counts, not in a letter from a lawyer, that these units are for sale, the townhouses and the rowhouses, and they can only be for-sale units. And I agree, there should be BMR in those, but regardless of whether there is or not, it needs to be written in the, you know, the resolution, every piece of, every document should document that these are for sale. So that's one thing. And like I said, on page 10 of this letter, is the only place I can find it, and that doesn't mean anything. So, secondly, above that, there's, on page 9, there's more language and whatever, but the count, it says, "The council hearing set for the 18th will be the fifth hearing." I disagree wholeheartedly that this is the fifth hearing on the same project. The project has been unstable, and this is only the second meeting tied to the BMR cluster plan. So I disagree wholeheartedly with this attorney on that. So if it had to have more meetings, so be it. I don't see it as a problem. I too, Kitty mentioned earlier, but I was wondering myself, why there is a different attorney every time we discuss this? There wasn't really an answer to Kitty's question as to whether Winter King, who she's representing, but, you know, when Planning Commission heard this most similar project, Barbara was the attorney. It's like, it feels very wrong to have new bodies in and out, with new things in and out, and try to call this a cohesive decision between decision-makers in our city. Let's see. Oh, some, one of my concerns about not having real language about these being for-sale units is because, an example is 19800 development was supposed to be for-sale condos, and it's not. It's actually for rent, and much of it is a corporate lease, which is...
Okay, finish up, you're at three, over three minutes.
There was a comment by the Atria people, caregivers are harder to find, that there aren't as many as we, the silver wave comes in, we have fewer people there to help. And here's a key question. If they're hard to find, there certainly should be someplace for them to live nearby, and I don't know where that is.
Lisa, you're at 3 minutes 30 seconds, you have to stop.
Okay.
Okay. I think, Heather, can you answer? It's true that no one answered the question about Winter King or why Barb is not here, and there's answers to both of those.
Yes, thank you for referring that question to me. So at the beginning of the meeting, John Martier, senior planner, introduced Winter King as an attorney with Schumahalley &amp; Weinberger, and Schumahalley &amp; Weinberger is the firm that provides contract city attorney services for the city, and so perhaps we could have been more clear, but by saying she's an attorney with Schumahalley &amp; Weinberger, she is with my firm and is, who serves as city attorney, and so she is advising the city, and it's not infrequent for, in fact, it's the norm to have different attorneys serving, advising the Planning Commission and the City Council, and Barb Couts was not able to advise the City Council for various reasons that we don't need to disclose here.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will move on to Richard Adler, welcome.
Hi, I've got some slides. There they are.
Okay.
Okay, well, good morning. My name is Richard Adler. I'm Chair of Age Friendly Cupertino, and I'd like to just introduce our group and share our perspective on the topic of senior housing. Next slide. In 2017, Cupertino applied to the World Health Organization. We officially recognize it as an age-friendly city, which doesn't mean that we're perfect in this regard, but that we're committed to working toward making Cupertino a better place for residents to grow old. And in January of 2018, Cupertino officially celebrated achieving this recognition, joined 14 other cities in the county to become part of something called Age Friendly Silicon Valley. Next slide. There are currently five members of the Age Friendly Cupertino Task Force, Min Lee, Henry Sang, Jean Bedore, Dave Sterns, and myself, and you'll hear from a few others, hopefully, this evening or this morning. So next, what is it that makes a city age-friendly? According to World Health Organization, there are eight key dimensions, three that are physical housing, transportation, outdoor spaces, and five others that relate to a social environment, social participation, respect, civic participation, communication, and health services. Next, the first activity of our task force was a report that we created on the status of seniors in Cupertino. Report covers a lot of topics, but I just want to touch on some key data on Cupertino's senior population. Next slide. Currently, Cupertino's population of just under 58,000 includes approximately 7,000 adults aged 65 and older, means they make up about 12% of our population. But by 2030, when the overall population will increase to about 63,000, number of seniors will grow to almost 10,000, represent 15% of the total population. And in fact, on the next slide, we'll see that the only age group that's going to be growing substantially in the near future is older adults in our community, and while those under 60 will just increase slightly, if at all, 60 population will grow rapidly. Next, our task force has been working with a variety of other agencies in the community. We're trying to identify gaps and coordinate activities, and as we proceed with this, we'll keep you informed. But finally, there's one priority that we've identified that's particularly relevant to tonight's discussion. The final slide. We did a study to prepare for this, there should be some more data, so maybe press go again, yeah. The number one concern of Cupertino's seniors is housing, and specifically the availability of appropriate and affordable housing alternatives that allow adults to remain in the community as they age and their needs change. And this project really does play a big role in filling that need. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Next, we go to Henry Sang. Welcome, Henry.
I have some slides as well.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Henry Wu Sang Jr., and I'm speaking to you today as a member of the Age Friendly Cupertino Task Force. My views and statements do not necessarily reflect the position of other organizations which I'm a member. We need to seriously have conversations in Cupertino about our growing senior needs. Key among these, as Richard mentioned, was that range of housing and support services for seniors. As an advocate for the senior community, we'd like to share those insights and draw your attention to these areas, encouraging studies and community discussions. Slide 2, please. Here is a qualitative map showing our existing Cupertino housing options. We plot price against a set of options. As you can see, there's some very narrow set of things which are over-compressed near the Y-axis, and where you have a multitude of options, for example, long-term community care with a mix of housing and services across the spectrum, from fully independent to fully dependent, you see it rises and up to the right. But notice that in the middle, there is a, actually, a missing middle. We have four options presently in the city, and the foothold that we just recently added with Veranda for extremely low-income housing is addressing our BMR, but we're actually at a pretty severe deficit in these types of units. On the whole, we can express, expect that the increases in the number of seniors in Cupertino in all areas are going to lead to an even greater deficit. Slide 3, please. Here are some examples of what is missing from that middle. Let's start with the BMR we were just talking about. We have a need for not only the extreme lower, low income, but the very low, the low, and even the moderate income senior housing. In fact, we even need market-rate senior housing, we do not have enough. All of these, of course, need to be built with the range of senior conditions, so they're appropriate for seniors. In addition to those independent housing types, though, we also lack assisted living and skilled nursing rooms. Our services need to go from things like post-surgical rehab after you've had a joint replacement or an open-heart surgery, to memory care, physical therapy facilities, and adult daycare. By the way, adult daycare is very important for families taking care of elderly relatives or spouse taking care of a loved one, but needing an occasional hand, even if you have a personal health assistant. Every now and then you need another option. Furthermore, these options need to happen over a wide price range. For most of us, we don't know about these things until something bad happens to our family. Internally, we call that the event. Then you need to scurry to find options, and the question is, will those choices be available when you need them? And when that silver tsunami crashes on our shore, will we be actually aware and have we planned for it? Slide 4. I was asked after the Planning Commission to actually overlay what I saw as the Westport fill-in on that, and you can see that they are offering some things on the left with some low income and very low income, as well as having some assisted and memory care units. So we strongly support the city of Cupertino investigating and studying our future needs for a range of senior living and service options. Age Friendly Cupertino is a volunteer advocacy organization, and we're here to help. Thank you for the opportunity to talk.
Okay, thank you, Henry. Next, we are on to Jean Bedore. Welcome, Jean.
Good morning.
Hey, we can hear you, good morning.
Could you bring up my slides, please?
Kirsten.
Are you able to find them, Kirsten?
Uh, Kirsten-
She looks like she's, she was working on it, hold on.
Okay. We just lost her screen.
Sorry, I keep losing it, um, just one second, okay, try this again, there we go. Okay. Can you see it?
No. No.
Uh, okay. Uh, let's see. Okay, try this one more time.
There we go. Thank you much. Thank, and thank you Mayor, Mayor Scharf and council members, although this is awfully late to consider senior housing. My name is Jean Bedore, and I've lived in Cupertino for thirty years. I am president of the Cupertino Senior Center Advisory Council, but tonight I am speaking as a citizen member of the Age Friendly Cupertino Task Force. Slide two. Our community is aging, like it or not. Approximately one-third of households in Cupertino have at least one resident over the age of sixty. Households with at least two older people can function at a higher level, since there is more than one person to share the tasks of daily living. Cupertino has a lot of large family homes occupied by one or two people, with very limited options to move into what is more appropriate housing. These older adults want to stay in their community, close to their family and friends, where they have lived for thirty, forty, even fifty years, or longer. They want to keep their trusted medical providers. The needs of older adults change over time. Today's vigorous seventy-year-old will need more services after eighty. Loss of a spouse suddenly turns the functioning two-person household into a single-person household with a greater need for senior services. Dementia, which increases with age, has the same effect, with one spouse often moving to a memory care unit, leaving the well-spouse as a single-person household. Slide three. There aren't many choices to change houses in Cupertino. There are six thousand five hundred and eighty-five households with a resident over the age of sixty. When those residents need additional care, and many will need some type of assisted living, there's a grand total of five hundred and eighty-four total units, less than ten percent of our older adult households. Furthermore, most of those units require buying into a life community, a CCRC. So where are the independent memory units? Where's the independent assisted living? Not in Cupertino. Next slide. Now what about BMR housing? It's even worse. The city's BMR housing program is for working adults, not seniors. Most people on the four-hundred-person waitlist will never have the opportunity for BMR housing, which, with such low annual turnover. Market rate housing isn't much better, with less than two percent turnover annually. Isn't it time to start building more senior housing in Cupertino? Thank you for the opportunity to comment. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Jean. Um, let's see, we are, next hand up is, oh, well, let me lower, lower that hand, is David Sterns, welcome, David. David, are you there?
How about that?
Okay, there we go.
You had to present a little unmute button before I could be heard.
Okay.
Okay, I'm a, a longtime resident of Cupertino, uh, used to live over on Pear Tree Lane, near the hole formerly known as Sears. I'm now a resident, a very happy resident at the Forum, Rancho San Antonio, and yet another member of Age Friendly Cupertino. Uh, next slide, please. Basically, I like Westport because it provides a bunch of new options for senior housing in Cupertino. The Atria facility is a, uh, RCFE, a registered care facility for the elderly, which means it's licensed by almost every government in the United States, and has a lot of rules about things, so that's really the key reason why you can't have the amenities and Atria available to people outside. It's a, a pretty much closed community, it's got to have, you know, key doors and things like that. And also, Westport offers some affordable senior housing. Um, I would like to speak to the question of, who the heck would, you know, what Cupertino resident might want to move to a place like Westport? Why would you want to downsize? Uh, next slide, please. Uh, I, I've heard this from so many of my friends, uh, I want to age in place, I'll hire help if I need it. Um, aging in place is a great idea, it works right up till the day it stops working. The event, uh, as Henry Sang mentioned, it can happen quite suddenly, could be stroke, cancer, a fall, Alzheimer's creeps up on you, I'm forgetting names more and more, uh, maybe I've got a few years left, but the event comes to all seniors, and so you have to plan for it, you got to think about downsizing. Um, one thing about, if you're, you know, living in a house in Cupertino and you move out and downsize, your house suddenly becomes available to a young family with kids, and that's certainly what happened to mine, a couple of engineers moved in, they've got two children now, and they're going to go to Cupertino schools, uh, so it's a big property tax base, actually, advantage to the city. Uh, I was on, of course, really low, low taxation, and they're on a pretty high one. So, if you've got to downsize, where do you go? And, uh, Jean spoke to that a minute ago, uh, you really want to stay in the town you know, you've got a hair cutter, you've got a doctor, you've got a whole bunch of services, you've got friends and family. So, and we moved five years ago, have no regrets, it's a great idea, Westport adds to senior housing options, that's why I support it. Thanks.
Great, thank you, thank you for being concise. And next we have, um, I'm sure I'll butcher this name, Roma Ankulukar, welcome.
Hello, I have some slides I'd like to be presented.
Okay.
Thank you Mayor Scharf, city council members and city staff. I am speaking for myself and not representing any organization to which I belong. My name is Roma Ankulukar, I attend Monovista High School and have been a Cupertino resident for seven years. Next slide, please. I run a blogging site called Dementia Insight, which was created in memory of my dear grandmother who suffered from Alzheimer's. The site hosts various messages from those who are dealing with dementia as a way to spread the knowledge. I welcome everyone to reach out via the contact page on the website if you would like. Next slide, please. As part of my initiative to spread awareness about dementia, I hosted a seminar last year. Respected members of our community, Mr. Henry Sang, Vice Mayor Darcy Paul, Dr. No, and Mr. Gary Snapper presented at the event regarding dementia care. Next slide, please. As of right now Cupertino is mostly comprised of young families. However, as early as twenty-thirty, the demographic will drastically shift as the population begins to age. According to the United States Census Bureau, by twenty-thirty, the number of adults sixty-five or older with Alzheimer's will almost double in the United States, as you can see in the graph. Next slide, please. From this data provided by the Alzheimer's Association, it can be seen that the prevalence of Alzheimer's in California will increase by twenty-one percent just in the next five years. Next slide, please. This chart displays the breakdown of Alzheimer's growth on a county level, and it can be seen that in Santa Clara County, it is projected that there will be a seventy-eight percent increase in Alzheimer's cases by twenty-thirty. While dementia care may not be at the forefront of our current priorities, it might be in just five years' time. It is very important that we begin planning for this eventuality now, so that we will be properly equipped to handle the situation if and when it arises. One of the first steps to make Cupertino a more dementia-friendly community is to ensure that there is adequate housing for our seniors who are suffering from it. As time progresses, most households will just consist of a husband and wife after the children have gone off to college. Both people are going to be in their sixties or older, and they will not be able to properly take care of themselves if one spouse gets diagnosed with dementia. Their kids could be living in different parts of the country, so they would not be able to support their parents with their day-to-day activities. In short, it is very difficult to take care of the seniors living with dementia in their homes. The solution to this problem is the addition of memory care facilities in our community. I am so glad that the city of Cupertino has already taken the initiative to build infrastructure for our seniors with memory issues. As I mentioned previously, the demand for memory care facilities is bound to increase due to the shift in the demographic. We need to be prepared for it when it happens. The city of Cupertino needs more memory care facilities in order to support residents with memory issues. Thank you so much for allowing me to comment.
Hey, thank you, Roma, that was great. Um, next we have Donna Austin. Go ahead, Donna.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, okay, great. Thank you, good morning, everybody.
Thank you, good morning, everybody.
Uh, in, in the nineties, there was a big-
I think you need to turn down your computer or TV.
Yeah, I get it, okay, I got it. Oh, boy.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
I'll start the timer over, okay, go.
Okay. Um, in the nineties, uh, I, there was a big concern in Cupertino that the city didn't have a heart, and I worked on the general plan, um, committee, and I worked on the, was on the Planning Commission, and this concern, they said, well, it will be a string of hearts along Stevens Creek Boulevard, we'll call it the Grand Boulevard, and the heart, we'll find the heart. Well, this project really excites me, because it's intergenerational, it's not just seniors, although that is so appealing to me at this point in my life, but, um, this development really ties the hearts of Cupertino together, incorporating like Deans College, Quinlan, and the sports center, BlackBerry Farm, this senior center, um, and all of the things down the road, like the golf course, the, uh, Staples, and Whole Foods, and it, it's a, a walking, biking shuttle distance from everything, and seniors want to be in the middle of everything. I love Cupertino, and this is an opportunity to be in a place where you're at home. Uh, Westport, uh, meets important housing demands for seniors in our area, it offers an affordable option for those who need it, and creates a diverse community range of townhouses, row houses, and it brings all people of all ages together. The project is part of a movement to reinvent retirement living with options to suit multiple generations. I feel Westport Cupertino is an example of a project our population needs that will enable us to think outside the box, while creating opportunities for intergenerational interaction. As a former Cupertino Planning Commissioner, forty-five-year resident and senior citizen, I urge you to vote for this evening to accept the staff report and approve, um, the Westport Cupertino project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Janet Van Zorn, welcome, Janet.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Oh, good evening, or I should say, good morning, Mayor Scharf, city council members and city manager. I'm very pleased to learn that the city planning staff have worked with Westport Corporation developers to make their proposal more accessible, more acceptable. There is definitely a need for housing options to meet the needs of our growing senior population. Although I too would have preferred to see the affordable units interspersed throughout the project, I encourage you to approve this project. This developer has offered us an opportunity to help me, the, meet the needs of our seniors. No project will be perfect, nor can we expect any project to meet all the needs. I fully agree with what, um, many of the people have just said about the needs for seniors, and so I'm not going to repeat again of what I have written down regarding those needs. Uh, I think the need is very evident, and that you all recognize that it exists. We are fortunate that this developer has chosen to address many of the needs we have for senior housing, and I encourage you to not only support this development, but also to work with the developers to make it happen. Moving this development forward with the spirit of cooperation will help us create a wonderful complex of housing opportunities for seniors here in Cupertino. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Janet. Um, next we move to Peggy Griffin, welcome, Peggy.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Good morning, city, city council and staff. I want to thank the staff for addressing some of my concerns regarding ensuring this project, this entire project comes to fruition as approved. Regarding your discussions, I urge you to define satisfactory assurance, require the CCNRs to be recorded, and require the second free concession to be used to avoid having one or more BMR units in the townhouses and rowhouses. Also, I urge you to get these three items, um, in writing, that all eighty-eight townhouses and rowhouses are for sale units. There's nothing in writing, don't repeat the nineteen eight hundred mistake. That, number two, all commercial retail space is open to the public, and specify the exact retail space square footage. Uh, prevent conversion to the residential amenities, and don't repeat Main Street mistake. Third, guarantee building one and two are built as senior housing before the entire townhouses and rowhouses are completed. Again, don't repeat the Main Street senior housing fiasco. Get it in writing, make these enforceable, and make them punishable with increasing substantial penalties. Uh, also, next page, the BMR comparability requirement for this project has not been met, it needs another concession, a third one. The staff report is misleading with respect to this requirement. The BMR manual requires unit size should be generally representative of the unit sizes within the market rate portion of the residential project, but our municipal code says affordable units shall be identical with the, the design of the market rate rental units in the project. If you look at the sizes, a, an average two-bedroom BMR unit is two-hundred-and-forty-four square feet smaller, that's equivalent to a fifteen-by-sixteen-foot room, that's huge. An average one-bedroom, uh, BMR unit is seventy-five-point-six square feet smaller, that's an eight-and-a-half by eight-and-a-half sized room. And then a studio is, um, a four-and-a-half, a four-by-four area, uh, these are not the same, identical is not subjective. I'm asking you to enforce our laws, require the necessary concession, continue this project until it meets the laws. I like the project, but it doesn't comply with our laws. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peggy. And last we go to Connie Cunningham, welcome.
Well, good morning, mayor, vice mayor and council members, um, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am Connie Cunningham, um, I'm on the Housing Commission, but I'm speaking for myself only. I have lived here thirty-three years. Um, tonight, you can take a step forward to help residents-
Welcome.
Well, good morning, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am Connie Cunningham. I'm on the Housing Commission, but I'm speaking for myself only. I have lived here 33 years. Tonight, you can take a step forward to help residents of all incomes and abilities as envisioned in the housing element of our general plan. The introduction of the housing element says, "The long-term vitality of Cupertino and the local economy depend upon the availability of all types of housing to meet the community's diverse housing needs. As Cupertino looks towards the future, increasing the range and diversity of housing options will be integral to the city's success. Consistent with the goal of being a balanced community, this housing element continues the city's commitment to ensuring new opportunities for residential development. And during this pandemic-induced economic downturn, I urge you to approve this Westport Cupertino. Our city can begin its new normal life post-COVID with a housing project that will help ease our housing shortage. I am persuaded by tonight's discussion that changes that have been made to the project serve our community well. In line with the Housing Accountability Act, I consider myself a reasonable person. I think the changes are consistent, are consistent with the dispersal requirement, without having to put the below-market-rate units in the same facility as the memory care units. I support Westport Cupertino. It has 267 homes, including market-rate homes, senior homes, 48 below-market-rate homes, and 27 memory care homes. All of these are critical needs in Cupertino with its growing population and especially of older residents. This project is going to locate homes in an area that has access to transportation, businesses, senior center, schools, including Deansa College. A gateway project at this site was envisioned by our general plan. KT Urban recognized the needs in our city and has carefully designed this project. I very much look forward to the day when families and individuals move into Westport Cupertino. On a personal note, my father began his journey into the nightmare of Alzheimer's disease when he was 78 years old. There is no cure for Alzheimer's disease or a way to stop or slow its progression. He died eight years later. Since I am 70 now, it is possible that I could use one of the memory care homes. My husband's grandparents suffered Alzheimer's disease too, so he has some concern about it for himself. As I speak here tonight, I know that many listeners have had this tragedy strike a loved one. I would love to have these memory care units in Cupertino. I urge you to approve the Westport Cupertino project tonight. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Connie. Let's...
Mr. Mayor, we have four to read.
Yes. Oh, okay, go ahead.
Okay, first one is from Jeff Paulson. In spite of my best efforts, I recently became a white-haired senior citizen, and I know that in spite of your best efforts and no matter what you do with your hair, each of you will join me in this fraternity of fragility. Since we are an aging population in Cupertino, it's really important that you approve the Westport senior housing project tonight. Please don't delay because with every passing day, the long, bony fingers of old age reach steadily into our future. Warmly, Jeff. Jeff Paulson, former chair, Cupertino Planning Commission. And the next email is from Jennifer Griffin. Dear City Council, I'm writing in concern of the large construction project planned for the Oaks Shopping Center, Westport, which is item 13 on the Cupertino City Council agenda for August 18, 2020. I do not believe that there should be the large construction proposed at the Oaks-Westport Shopping Center. 10 stories is way too high for the corner of Mary Avenue and Stevens Creek Boulevard. It is completely against our general plan and does not fit in with our height limits along Stevens Creek Boulevard in Cupertino. It does not follow the heart of the city plan, which runs the length of Stevens Creek Boulevard from the western edge of the city to the eastern edge of the city. There is supposed to be a full 35-foot setback from Stevens Creek Boulevard, and any buildings built facing Stevens Creek Boulevard are supposed to be stepped back in a 1 to 1.5 ratio or greater. The heart of the city was worked on as a street plan for Stevens Creek Boulevard to retain the look and the feel of Stevens Creek Boulevard with shade trees and a full 35-foot setback. It is unique to Cupertino and should be respected for that. Many people spent many hours working on the heart of the city for many years, and over the years, so that Heart of City remains a vital planning document for our city. I am proud that Heart of the City, the Heart of the City Plan is very specific about the street trees and the 35-foot public right-of-way is a very intrinsic plan to Cupertino, and it says a lot about what our city values, trees and green space. I'm also against the removal of the oak trees at the Oaks property. They're trying to remove many 100-year-old or older oak trees. They're trying to cut down many young, 12-year-old oak trees. They were planted on the property by direction of the city council as mitigation for other trees removed from the property. This was in 2008. City council studied the property for many hours and went over the trees, tree by tree, to make sure trees were saved and also replaced. There are two oak trees on the Oaks Shopping Center entrance on Stevens Creek Boulevard that are in the public right-of-way, and they were planted as mitigation from having to remove an oak at that location at the shopping center entrance from Stevens Creek Boulevard. These two young oaks were planted in 2008 by order of the city council. There are also 20 young, 12-year-old oak trees that were planted on the western boundary of the Oaks Shopping Center adjacent to Highway 280, 85 on-ramp, and this is near the southwest corner of the property. It's not proper to cut down trees that another city council and the public spent hours on in 2008 to build tall, high-density housing and buildings all over. I suggest that the city council records from 2000... City council records from 2008 be pulled up and consulted for the issues with the oaks being planted by the city council at the time period, at that time period. I also think it would be a travesty to remove any of the ancient oak trees on the property. These are on the south side of the jewelry store and on the north side of the jewelry store. Also, the traffic load on Mary Avenue and Stevens Creek Boulevard is already at full capacity and overloaded...
Okay, finish up.
And adding tons of traffic and vehicles from this proposed high-rise construction would further exacerbate an very bad traffic situation. There's two more paragraphs. Just cut me off when you're ready. This proposed construction project is way too big and dense for the site. This has been the problem in the most past proposed projects.
Okay, thank you, Kirsten.
Okay, so...
Thank you, Jennifer. One more?
Two more. One from Daniel Burnett Foster.
Okay.
Um, let's see, okay. So, "My name is Daniel, and I'm a resident of Stevens Creek Boulevard. I really appreciate all the efforts of the city to promote sustainability. Considering this uncomfortable heat wave and the stress of the possible blackouts and the fact that buildings account for 40% of greenhouse gas emissions in the U.S., I strongly urge the city to require the new construction project to meet basic sustainability standards regarding materials and insulation, window placement, utilities, et cetera. This is a change you must see to avoid longer periods of heat waves and blackouts. Thank you so much for your time. Best regards, Daniel Burnett Foster." And the final comment is from J.R. Fruin. Mayor Scharf and members of the city council, the project before you provides important housing options that are in short supply in Cupertino. It merits support because it helps us meet our urgent housing needs, most critically for seniors. With the applicant's request for a concession under the density bonus law to set aside the BMR dispersion requirement, that law in tandem with concession under the density bonus law... I'm sorry. That law in tandem with the Housing Accountability Act appears to mandate your approval. Please do not expose the city, its reputation, and the general fund to further damage by inviting litigation over this project. It is unfortunate that the community will not get a more beneficial project at this key site. This applicant's prior general plan amendment applications demonstrated a willingness to negotiate alternatives with stronger benefits. As we look into the coming years, I hope you will work toward changing Cupertino's reputation as a place unwilling to negotiate. By doing so, council can exert a stronger guiding hand that maximizes the benefit to our community that new development can bring, especially as the state begins to set more aggressive and unavoidable housing goals for us. Many thanks, J.R. Fruin, Cupertino resident. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, does the applicant get an opportunity for... To address the council with any rebuttal comments?
Rebutts to the residents?
No, to the... To address the city council's comments regarding...
Yeah, there is an opportunity for the applicant in our hearing outline to respond to comments from members of the public.
Okay, yeah, let me...
With the time limit, I believe.
Would you like to respond to any of the comments from the public?
Yes, I would, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, I want to thank the public for coming out this evening, and some very, very thoughtful comments were made by the aging senior group in Cupertino, the task force. I thought their slides were excellent. I thought their presentation was phenomenal. There are also comments by Connie Cunningham and others that truly addressed the goals that KT Urban, Related California, and Atria have put forth to design this project to the best of our abilities. I do want to introduce Andy Faber because there was a question that was raised with respect to the possibility of moving some of the affordable units to the townhome units. Our project has been designed specifically with very low and low-income senior housing providing for the project. In fact, it's closer to 20% of the total project. That is the project that we have before the city council this evening. We're not proposing another project. Modifications to this project will not be built by KT Urban, Atria, or Related California. So I would just like to let our land use attorney address anything that he might have picked up with some of the public comments. Andy?
Thank you. With the mayor's consent, good morning. This is, as Mark said, a carefully balanced project that has a number of different components. As far as the BMR component goes, it is senior BMR. It has always been that way, going back to 2018, and the staff has always concurred with our analysis that the senior BMR needs to be put in one building. I think they've said that tonight, and it's in the staff report as well. This is not a project for non-age-restricted BMRs. Under the Housing Accountability Act, the city does not have the option to redesign the project in that regard. This is true from the Walmer case of Berkeley, I think that your council knows about well. And it's true from the basic premise of the Housing Accountability Act, which says, as you, I know you've been advised, that a city cannot deny or reduce the density of a project unless there are specific adverse impacts on the public health or safety, which, as the staff has told you, obviously are not true here. In effect, here, if you approve the project with the condition that the BMR component is changed, such that certain BMRs have to be included in the townhome projects, that would have the... That would be effectively a denial or an approval at lower density under the Housing Accountability Act. And in fact, cities had started doing something like that and putting conditions on projects and not denying them. In 2019, the legislature amended the Housing Accountability Act just last year to say that lower density, in other words, approving at lower density includes any conditions that have the same effect or impact on the ability of the project to approve housing. So I want to make it clear that our legal understanding of the Housing Accountability Act is that if you put in a condition for non-age-restricted BMRs in the townhome units, that will have the effect of denial or approval at a lower density of this project. And Mark has stated for the record that the project will not be built under those conditions. So I think it's, it would be a very serious thing to do, and I urge you to accept the project as it has been proposed to you from the BMR standpoint. That's really all I wanted to say on that subject, but I think it's a, it's an important subject, and of course, it's one that you've been advised on as well. Thank you.